...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Francisco.
Here.
Hotchkiss.
Here.
House.
Here.
Mario.
Here.
Rouse.
Here.
White.
Mayor Schneider.
Here.
Proclamation declaring April 2013 as Fair Housing Month. Come on up. Thank you for being here. 2013 marks the 50th anniversary of California's fair housing laws, the 45th anniversary of the Federal Fair Housing Act, and the 30th anniversary of the City of Santa Barbara's housing discrimination ordinance. And the City of Santa Barbara's housing discrimination ordinance was enacted to ensure that a fair choice of rental housing was available to all individuals regardless of race, color, religion, sex, age, marital status, national origin, familial status, mental or physical disability, sexual orientation, or ancestry. And despite the local, state, and federal laws on the books, reports of discrimination in housing does continue. During the month of April, interested parties from both the private and public sectors participated in the national effort to promote fair housing. And as a part of the city's participation in Fair Housing Month, notices were placed on the city news page directing residents to information about the city's Fair Housing and Rental Housing Mediation Task Force programs, and an announcement was placed in the city newsletter. So therefore, I, Helene Schneider, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Santa Barbara, California, do hereby proclaim April as Fair Housing Month and urge all citizens to understand and exercise their right to equal housing opportunities. And thank you both for all your work for the city as well. Thank you very much. And if you'd like to speak?
Yeah, quick. Thank you, Madam Mayor, for taking the time to recognize April as Fair Housing Month. Liz Stotts, I think most of you know me as the Community Development Program Specialist and also the city's Fair Housing Officer. Andrea Bifano, if you all know her, from the Rental Housing Mediation Task Force. Despite all the fair housing laws that have been created at the federal, state, and local level, discrimination is still a problem. Last year, the city conducted a fair housing survey and found that 47% of the respondents reported that they either experienced housing discrimination or knew somebody who had. To increase awareness, as the proclamation said, we posted announcements on the city's website and on the city newsletter to inform residents of their fair housing rights. In addition, staff created a fair housing laws report, which provides an overview of the Federal Fair Housing Act, the California's Fair Employment and Housing Act, and the city's housing ordinance. This report is available on the city's What's New? section of the homepage of the website. Another wonderful resource the city offers is the Rental Housing Mediation Task Force, which provides information on California rules and regulations pertaining to landlord's tenant rights and responsibilities persons in rental housing situations. This goes beyond fair housing. This is your overall rights as a tenant and your responsibilities as a tenant or as a landlord. And Andrea and I are so proud to work for a city that cares so much for its citizens' rights and provides services like the fair housing and the rental housing mediation program. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you again for all the work you do. Okay, moving on to any changes to the agenda.
Yes, Madam Mayor, there's one. Item number 16 is going to be removed from the agenda. Mr. Wiley's out ill today, and we'll schedule that at a later date.
Okay. Okay, moving on to public comment. I have a couple of speaker slips here. We'll start with Robert Mayo, and then followed by Bob Hanson. They're two minutes there at the podium. Good afternoon.
Hi, Mayor Madam and City Council. I live at 1200 Punta Gorda, and last week a fire engine was sent into our property. We have two fire lanes on Punta Gorda and the rear one on Canada Street, and the smallest fire engine they have came in and got stuck in the park and couldn't move. I didn't know if you had heard about this or not, and nobody was happy. I know that it was last week the item was taken off about the Punta Gorda Street. Is it just everything in hold now? Or, I don't know.
There are still some details to be determined, and we haven't re-agendized it yet.
Okay, thank you very much. I just want to say, please save the Punta Gorda fire lane. Thank you very much.
Bob Hanson will be followed by Nancy McCrady.
I'm advertising for Starbucks. I had a cup of coffee, so excuse me if I look a little jittery up here. But yesterday, I was down by the brick art chair, down by the habit, and the mayor walked by. So I said, "Did you happen to see and get the Assembly Bill that's been introduced that's called AB 5 Homeless Civil Rights Bill?" And she said she did. So she was walking, so I thought, "Well, you know, I'm gonna walk with her just a little way, so I can come tomorrow and say, you know what? I walked with the mayor on State Street." And it was fun, and you know why the kids aren't hanging out there at the brick area? Does anyone know? They put a little sign up that said, "No Smoking." That's how you do it. So, anywho, the AB 5 Homeless Civil Rights Bill, you can go online and load it down. It's 30 pages. I handed out a couple copies to some people. It was introduced by San Francisco and Sacramento homeless coalitions and some other people, and it's a start of having the state do something. Let's just say five states would assign it, civil rights bill, then would pressure Obama, which he's asking people, "If you want something done, make me do it." And so it is a national agenda. They are doing the same thing for the homeless civil rights there. So he could sign an executive order like he did with the Latino students to get work visas, but this would be on a national scale where maybe homeless could pay $200 a month or maybe work 20 hours a month, but no more than 20 people in one of these facilities or whatever it might be, and we make some sense out of it. Because what we're doing is each city all across this nation is doing the same thing Santa Barbara's doing. We have an issue that, you know, is kind of the issue, and we have police and we have people walking around. And, you know, we're not gonna get rid of the problem, but this is a great bill, so it's AB 5 Homeless Civil Rights Bill in the Assembly. They're gonna be working on it again. It'll probably take another year.
Need to wind up, please.
The mayor could sit there and sign that down the road, the governors, and thank you very much, and I hope to see you again to walk with you just for a short distance and say hello. Thank you.
Nancy McCrady will be followed by Robert Johns.
I just wanted to continue about the AB 5. On May 31st, it is going to be held up in front of the Appropriations Committee. Then it has to go to, it'd probably be held up because of financial considerations, and then it's gonna have to go to the Assembly Floor and then Senate Committee. So there's a number of different steps it has to go through, and I'd just like to say that the homeless are very excited about this. However, it's gonna take a long time, and then, of course, it has to go to Governor Brown to sign. So there's a number of steps that it still has to go through, so we don't have to get too excited about it yet, but it's giving the homeless on the streets a lot of hope. So, thanks.
Dr. Johns will be followed by Kate Longstory.
Good afternoon, City Councilpersons. Governor Brown has promised to shore up the education bill with mental health funds. Now, you're doing a wonderful job on the safety program for schools, but we've gotta get working on this mental health issue thing. And I've identified certain areas, and I want to make sure that I say that we must not send wolves in sheep's clothing to protect lambs. I won't be able to fully identify what I want to say here, but many of the adolescent and youth are at risk, and these youth have mood disorders, substance abuse disorder, schizophrenia, personality disorder, anxiety, and this is not a definitive profile for youths who commit homicide. There's not been a heck of a lot of research because it's so new, but as I culled through the various publications and newspapers, I found some of these risk factors, which I've already named. Youth who live alone with single parents, and I'm not singling out single parents, they do, you know, someone's already told me, "Hey, you know, what are you doing here with these single..." But single parents do a tremendous job with their parents, but there are some where they're living in separated or divorced environments, and youth are isolated, sparse communication with their peers, and have not been seen for quite some time. Now, these are risk factors, and the only persons who can identify these risk factors in this city are teachers and administrators. These teachers and administrators right now know who these kids are, and that's one we need to kind of get into. Get us, we gotta get a protective shield for these kids.
Thank you, your time is up.
And, okay, thank you very much.
Kate Longstory, be the final speaker. Now, is this for Mr. Pennington giving you two minutes? Because this other person's sitting, is that correct? So I'm gonna put your name down, Mr. Pennington. So, Ms. Longstory, you have up to four minutes. I'm just putting it for the note. That's fine, you have up to four minutes.
Mayor Schneider and members of the Santa Barbara City Council. Gandhi and Arthur Schopenhauer, a 19th-century philosopher, explained that truth goes through several stages. First, it is ignored, then it's ridiculed, then it's violently opposed, and then it becomes truth self-evident. Do you understand why a person cannot, it's difficult for someone to be a prophet in their own land, but I have maintained my allegations of wrongdoing for 15 years, and now the truth comes out. Truth comes as a conqueror only to those who have lost the art of welcoming it as a friend. That's Rabindranath Tagore. So, the previous speaker talked about the legal vindication for the homeless. I hope you're aware that the Supreme Court ruled that Santa Barbara may no longer persecute the homeless for sleeping on public property. That was a part of the policing-for-profit allegation. No longer is there policing for safety, but it's to collect money from people. What Officer Hove calls "lifestyle crimes," he said, "for those people who are loud or sleeping in public. You've been ticketing them." Then they get into the court system where they're forced to take medication, and they're on probation, so their lives become, oh, a living hell if it wasn't already. And then, for example, my client was put in jail for three months, no ticket, just because they wanted him off the street. Oh, you wanted him off the street. You told the city to get rid of these obnoxious homeless people. That was during the tourist season. So he was in jail for three months, and the private company called Horizon that was supposed to be administering mental health services, why, they weren't. That's how our homeless mentally ill friend, Jimmy Baumann, he ended up in jail because he's kind of loud. But he was beaten, and then from there, he went to Cottage Hospital in a coma for four days, and there he died. So what's great about that mental health service company, Horizon, is because they're private, they have a private legal department, and they have a private insurance, liability insurance for when they don't deliver the services they were paid to deliver. That's where we're going to go after $500 million, all of the homeless, all of the mentally ill, all of the people who have been persecuted because that's what you directed the police to do. Now, I hope you know that in the same article about the homeless have a right to sleep, well, the people who had blood drawn without their consent...
Your time's up, thank you.
Oh, well, this is, this is a forum that will be held May 30th. It's called Marketing of Madness. It's the exposure of the unholy alliance of the pharmaceuticals who make $80 billion...
Thank you, your time is up.
...a year. They're in collusion with our mental health agency, so I hope you've read the Santa Barbara Independent.
Your time is up, Ms. Longstory.
Okay, thank you, sorry.
Okay.
May 30th.
That closes public comment. Move on to the consent calendar. You have some items to read.
Integrated Pest Management 2012 Annual Report and Advisory Committee Resolution. It's item number five. Recommendation that Council adopt by reading of title only a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara revising the composition of the Integrated Pest Management Advisory Committee and rescinding Resolution 06-008. Item number seven. Introduction of Ordinance for City Consent to Sublease Amendment between Signature Flight Support Corporation and Coastal Aviation Maintenance LLC. Recommendation that Council introduce and subsequently adopt by reading of title only an ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara approving the city's consent to an amendment of a sublease between Signature Flight Support Corporation, a California corporation, and Coastal Aviation Maintenance LLC, a California limited liability corporation, for the sublease of a portion of the premises lease to Signature Flight Support and Restated Lease Agreement Number 12037.2 located at 303 John Donaldson Place.
Thank you. Without further objection, we'll wait for the reading. We had a request to pull item six and also a request for item nine. If you could read item number six.
Capital Improvement Projects Third Quarter Report for Fiscal Year 2013.
Thank you. Mr. Hotchkiss.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On item six, Mr. Kelly, we talked briefly on the phone under Public Works Streets. It talks about Highway Safety Improvement Program, Crosswalk Enhancement, and it specifically states in the first paragraph, enhancements may include accommodation of pedestrian median refuges, curb extensions, new access ramps, and pedestrian-activated flashers. Could we talk a little bit more about that, starting with the curb extensions, please?
Yes, indeed, Madam Mayor and Councilmember Hotchkiss. I'd like to introduce our traffic engineer, Derek Bailey, who can fill you in on the details.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hotchkiss, the Highway Safety Improvement Program grant that we were awarded last fall was to address safety at five intersections in the city, and there's only one of them that we're planning curb extensions at, and that's at the intersection of Cabrillo and Anacapa. The curb extensions along the beach, right in front of the beach house, the curb extensions along the south side of the intersection are gonna be nearly identical to the ones that have been constructed at Cabrillo and Bath and Chapala and Ambassador Park. And the purpose of that curb extension is actually to preserve on-street parking. By moving the pedestrians' starting position a little bit further out into the street, pedestrians can see further down the street, and by that way, we can actually keep parking, more on-street parking closer to the intersection. If that curb extension weren't there, we'd actually have to push the parking further away from the intersection to maintain those sightlines.
Without a diagram, this is a little hard to follow, but if perhaps there's something you could show. As I recall, we're talking about four curb extensions, two curb extensions, what? Because you got a corner there.
It'll be three, because it's a T-intersection. We'll bring up a diagram here for you.
And it seems to me right now in Cabrillo, there's two lanes each way plus a kind of bus parking area, correct?
That's correct.
Does that disappear?
No, we'll...
All right, let's go for that.
It'll probably take the projector a couple minutes to warm up.
That was fast.
Even at the speed of light.
Right, exactly. Okay, walk us through it.
Very good.
Show existing and proposed, would you please?
The existing curb line along the south side is right there. Like so. Likewise, along the north is about like so, running roughly in line with the northern edge of the green area. So these improvements are gonna tie into the Cabrillo Bridge replacement improvements that are also planned for the area. Starting on the south side of the street, this curb extension...
Which is how big?
It's five feet wide and about the width of the intersection. It'll leave a 14-foot travel lane immediately north of it. Typically, travel lanes are 10 or 11 feet, so this is extra wide going past the curb extension. And the purpose of this curb extension is to move the pedestrian's starting position a little bit further out into the street to improve sightlines. That pedestrian standing at the edge of the ramp will be able to see further down the street, around parked cars, which would be roughly in this area right here, and if not...
And will remain parking?
And will remain parking. We do want to maintain as much on-street parking as possible in this area.
Do we lose any parking with us at all? Just one space there, maybe?
Yeah, there will be a...
Right there.
There will be the elimination of about one space.
Okay.
Right here. But by pushing that pedestrian's starting position further out, we can maintain more on-street parking. If the pedestrian's starting position was in line with the existing curb, we would have to push parking further away from the intersection in order to...
No, there's painted red.
Right.
Okay, now how about on the opposite side of the street?
Now, the north side of the street, the purpose right here is actually to extend the sidewalk area in order to have enough room to put a streetlight and the pedestrian-activated flashers. And the real safety features that we're trying to focus on at this intersection are the median refuge island and the flashers, but along the north side, right in front of the Fish House, and this is a picture of that sidewalk. It's really narrow, and you actually see when I took this picture, there was a lady with a stroller happened to be walking past there and some people going in the other direction. This area is very constrained, and there is no room for us to put a streetlight or a pole that would hold a flasher with the existing sidewalk configuration. So the only way to do that is to push that curb out into the street.
So we lose a right turn lane there?
We will lose the right turn lane.
Let's go back to the diagram if we could. All right, so that's, you could say that impedes traffic turning right. Is there any other traffic that's impeded with these proposals?
No, and it's worth pointing out that this is not a heavily-used right turn lane. During peak hours in the summer, there are about 80 turns an hour that happen there. That's about the most that there ever are. But the real bottleneck in this area is the intersection of State and Cabrillo. So eliminating this right turn lane isn't going to impede people's ability to move east and west on Cabrillo any faster or slower than today.
Well, it's gonna, we got one every minute, basically, a little bit more than that.
Right.
So they will now stop in the far-right lane. Traffic behind them will have to go around or stop, correct? On Cabrillo?
They'll be, right, they'll be moving slower around the corner from that lane than presently.
And there's sort of a bus waiting zone there, is that what that's for? Right now?
Right now, this is the current location of the MTD Waterfront Shuttle Stop. So what's happening here is this, this curb extension on this corner is actually part of the Cabrillo Bridge project. So what we're doing is we're creating a bus pullout in this area. This area right here is, it's kind of dead pavement. There's nothing going on there. There's no bus stop, there's no parking, there's nothing happening. So we thought it best to extend the sidewalk in that area. It's also worth pointing out that we met with the management of the Fish House, and we've had problems in the past with vehicles parking in this area, immediately in front of the Fish House's patio. It blocks the view, obviously a very important feature for them. So by extending this down, it eliminates the opportunity for that, and they were quite supportive of that.
Does it allow them to put tables on the sidewalk?
No, it's, just given the way their patio is configured with the wall and it's up a little bit higher and everything, it doesn't really match in with the sidewalk improvements. It would be possible, in front of the El Torito Restaurant, to have this as a sidewalk dining area, most likely, but we haven't approached them about that.
What's the accident rate, if I can put it that way here, at this intersection?
It's actually quite low overall. There have been some pedestrian-involved collisions, that's why we were eligible to receive this grant. I believe in the last 10 years, there's been four pedestrian-involved crashes at this location.
And do we have other intersections that are more hazardous, if I can put it that way?
For pedestrians?
Yeah.
I would say the highest priority that the city has in terms of pedestrian safety now would be State and Caia Polo, Colorado, that connects the San Roque neighborhood with Mackenzie Park. That's also part of this project. It's one of the other five intersections that we...
That's gonna get a flasher, right?
It will, and a median island.
And since flashers are new to us and are on Cabrillo and Milpus now, do we have any feedback on their effectiveness? I mean, you see them for sure.
They seem to be working very well. We haven't done our follow-up study yet. We're giving it some time for people to get used to, but just observations, and I've been through them many times myself, they seem to be working very well.
Yeah, anecdotally, I would agree. By the way, occasionally, they get stuck on.
We've been out to repair them, and yes, we're aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate you bringing this up, Mr. Hotchkiss, by the way. The original layout of the Yanonali yellow flashing lights had, as I recall, an arm reaching across that street. Is that was, and then there was an engineering reason, the structural reason, that that didn't go forward. Could you refresh our memories, or at least mine, on that?
Thank you. Madam Mayor, Councilmember White, the original plan was to install mastarms on the existing streetlight poles at that intersection and actually put the flasher out over the intersection. There are two companies that manufacture those mastarm poles. Neither one of them would sell those mastarms to the city to mount on the existing poles. They had some structural failures of the streetlight poles in the Los Angeles area during some Santa Ana winds in the last few years. So they said, "We'll sell them to you, but you also have to buy new poles for that, for those locations that are more structurally sufficient." Given the extra cost and lead time in order to get those poles and the mastarms, we wanted to get something done as quickly as possible, so we went ahead and installed the side-mounted flashers. We installed extra sets of them. There's actually four in each direction now instead of three, and it seems to be working quite well. We've been out there with the police doing some crosswalk enforcement, and we've had a challenging time actually catching some violators. So it seems to be working very well. We're still open to putting in the mastarms if they're needed, but we want to explore this lower-cost option first.
And down here on these, is that, I mean, I find the Yanonali intersection to be, I mean, it's not in the league with the Ortega one, which has the median flashing going. And this, will this have the flashing in the median as well? Is that how this would work?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember White... Madam Mayor, Councilmember White, yes, the median will have flashers. And just as a general practice, we try to get those flashers as narrow into the driver's cone of vision as possible.
Yeah.
It seems to be much more effective.
Yeah, okay. Thank you very much.
I do have a couple of questions also on other parts of this item.
Of this item, okay, but first, Mr. House?
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. Thanks, Mr. Bailey, for being here today. So if I understand you, this particular design solution has some benefits for the parking, for the pedestrians, being able to have better visibility, probably also to be able to be seen, provides a lower-cost option for the flashing light approach versus the big mast arm kind of thing. Still allows a right-hand turn up and a kappa, but not a dedicated right-hand turn lane. And the main lanes themselves of Cabrillo are typically wider than normal, just because of the nature of the boulevard. They're 14 feet, or at least the one is 14 feet, closest to the beach.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember House, the curb lane will be 14 feet. The inside lanes will be-
They're smaller.
10, 10 and 1/2 feet.
Right.
But we felt it important to provide a buffer.
You know, I mean, just a quick comment here, Madam Mayor. I know that whole political careers have been made on curb extensions, but in this particular case, and wherever I think we have the opportunity to employ them, it really gives a signal to the public that we prioritize public safety, especially at these intersections. And with the care, I mean, they're not right for every place, clearly, but there's places where they are. And I appreciate our staff really thoughtfully considering what the right options are. And in a case like this, we have a project, which is this particular project, 90% grant-funded. We're able to make a case for pedestrian safety as a key element of it. Where they've been done in the city, I think they, I mean, some people may disagree, but I think they're pretty beautiful. And I just want to really appreciate your work, Mr. Bailey, in helping us identify where they make sense and where they don't. Thank you.
Mr. Hotchkiss, did you want to continue on this?
A follow-up question, if I could, for what Mr. White brought up, which was good, about over in Milpus. Lacking those new arms, I assume saves us some money, is that correct?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hotchkiss, yes, the arms themselves were only about $5,000 for the pair of them, but new streetlight poles would have added probably another $25,000 to $30,000, including the-
Each?
Foundations, total. So we saved $30,000 with this alternative.
That's sort of a win-win. Great, thanks very much.
Thank you.
And Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hotchkiss, as far as the decision process of moving forward, one of the more important elements was less the cost than the timing. If we went with this new arm, it would have delayed the whole installation by many months. So by just installing it without the arm and doing the observation as Derek had described, let's wait until, see if it does work, and then if it's necessary, we can come in after the fact. But we wanted to get the installation in as soon as possible to serve the community.
No, I agree 100%. I think people that live there also felt that and would have been drumming their fingers if we had waited, and rightly so. Thank you very much.
Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On another piece of that agenda item, I'm on the capital improvement projects funding, the Lower West Downtown Street Lighting Phase One. Could we hear a bit about that? And then I'm curious about the West Side CDBG sidewalk infill as well, just to specify where that is. Am I off-base on what those-
No, so we're on the design of projects. Which sheet are you on?
I am on, oh, page one of two.
Okay, you're on the attachments.
And I'm 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 down. It says, "Lower West Downtown Street Lighting Phase One, Parenthesis 3."
Correct, that is a completed project.
Yes, that's a completed project.
Correct.
And then the West Side CDBG, on the next page, page 2 of 2, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 down, is that another completed project?
Yes, indeed. Both, all the projects in these sheets are completed projects. And just add on, just real quickly, is that the total value of the capital program, capital projects in the first three quarters is over $73 million. Much of that, of course, is in the third quarter with the completion of the airport terminal. And one of the questions that council has many times asked that we've added to the report is the percentage of grants. And if you look at the bottom of Attachment 2, is that approximately 27% of all that capital work was funded by grants of many different sources.
Thank you for that. And just one final comment, Madam Mayor, on the Milpus flashing yellow lights, I find the Yanonali option to be just not nearly as effective as the three-light system with the center, the one in the center, the median. And I appreciate that the reason for that was to preserve something like, as I recall, four parking spaces, or a large number of parking spaces on Milpus Street, and that's the trade-off that's going there. But I do find that that system to be just not nearly as effective as the others. And I know that that arm is not going to be that pretty, but we'll just watch it. And I'd hate to see it, there be a, you know, a bad accident there as our, as the result of this test. Thank you.
Back to the West Downtown Street Lighting Phase One's complete, but there are two more phases that we lost the funding for, because that was slated with RDA funding, is that correct?
Madam Mayor, that is correct.
And that, as I remember, it was like 750,000 per phase, so 1.5 total?
Correct.
And perhaps when we get to the public works budget, I don't know, where is that in the CIP, I guess, the Capital Improvement Plan, the six-year plan?
In the six-year plan, it is noted as being unfunded.
So there's no plan right now to complete the West Downtown Street Lighting unless we get some extra funding somehow, or Mr. Armstrong?
I think the only option that I think we see in the near term would be if you, as we mentioned in the budget message, we are going to have some bond monies available through the RDA, as well as some other one-time monies that council could allocate to that project if you wanted.
Right. It's quote-unquote shovel-ready. It's ready to go. We were, or are there still structural engineering plans that need to be completed?
It's essentially shovel-ready.
Okay, so it's just finding 1.5 million dollars somehow to complete the full West Downtown project?
Correct.
Okay. Well, we'll have that discussion, I guess, at the appropriate capital project time. Anything else on this item? You don't need to vote on it separately? Okay, on this item?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. R.
Thank you. Mr. Bailey, you mentioned this is going to be, this is going to be construction constructed concurrently with the bridge project, is that correct?
Concurrently, but towards the tail end of the project. So the current plan is to begin construction of the bridge in September 2014. It's about a 30-month project, so fall 2016 is probably when we'll-
I'm very much in favor of this design. I see this as really critical, anecdotally seeing and observing every day with the kids back and forth to the skateboard park. So it'd be nice if that, there was a way to expedite this, but I don't know if that's in the realm of possibilities or not.
The issue lining this up with construction is the bridge is going to be constructed in halves. So one half of the bridge is going to be torn down. Traffic will be pushed over to one side. So moving the traffic back and forth actually conflicts with the improvements at this location. So not until we get more of a complete bridge are we able to shift the traffic through this area properly.
Yeah, thanks for that clarification.
Okay, we also have a speaker for item number nine. If you could read item number nine, please.
Donation for Police K-9 Unit Trust.
Thank you. Mr. Case? We like it when you come here during consent calendar. You must have, you have something there in your hand, right?
I don't think I'll need a full 20 minutes.
22, 2, 2.
22 minutes?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, Council, Craig Case, President of the Santa Barbara Police Foundation. And I have two members of the board with me, Pam Jeremiah and Sergeant Mike McGrew, and I wanted to acknowledge them and thank them publicly for all the work that they do, which allows us to keep coming. We have a check here for $52,000 for the K-9 program, and we hope that you'll agree to accept it. If my numbers are correct in the last month or so, this means we've contributed over $100,000 to the police department. As you'll recall, Cam Sanchez started the foundation a couple of years ago with some community leaders, and we're happy to carry on that tradition in providing funding for unfunded programs and equipment, and also to provide funding for members of the department who have catastrophic illness or death. And we have been called upon a couple of times in the last month or so to assist individuals as well. So I hope that you will favorably-
Thank you. Why don't we vote on the consent calendar, stay right there, and then I can come down and give Mr. Armstrong that check?
All right.
Do we have a motion for the consent calendar?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, stay there.
Was that everybody that said, yeah? Okay, good.
Okay, moving on. Thank you, everyone. Moving on to report from the Finance Committee, Mr. Francisco.
Madam Mayor, the Finance Committee met today, and we heard the investment report, which the council just voted to accept on our recommendation. We also heard a summary discussion of revenue and expenses 2011 through 2017.
Great, thank you. Item number 12.
Annual Waste Water Collection System Report.
Okay, Ms. Bjork and Ms. Anderson.
Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, I'm Christine Anderson, Public Works Director, and we're here this afternoon to provide the annual Waste Water Collection System Report. It looks back at accomplishments over calendar year 2012 and forecasts our work plan for 2013. With me is Chris Toth, who's our Waste Water Systems Manager, and Rebecca Bjork, the Water Resources Manager, who will provide the report for you.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of council. Today's report is, missing my first slide, going to take a quick look at the history of the collection system operation. We're going to talk about our accomplishments in 2012 and our proposed work for 2013, as well as cover what the consent decree is, how we came to have the consent decree, and also the major components of the consent decree. This first slide shows the history of our collection system performance with regard to sanitary sewer overflows, which we call SSOs. It's a term you will hear a lot today. You can see that, starting in January of 2007, on the left-hand side of the slide, moving on towards the middle of the slide, which is 2010, we were seeing an increasing trend in the running annual average of spills per month. We were aware of this problem, and we were working to address it. In 2009, we were very fortunate to be able to hire Chris Toth, who came to us from the city of San Diego, where he had been working to help them correct their collection system problems very successfully. Chris came to work and immediately set about putting programs and projects in place to address collection system operation. And you can see that here in 2010, although we did peak in May of 2010, or April of 2010, we did then subsequently start to see a decrease in spills. That's not just because it happened. Chris was, had brought in an expert trainer to work with our field crews. Chris identified that the predominant source of spills was maintenance-related, meaning that it was related to how we clean pipes, and whether we're cleaning them at the right frequency, and whether or not we were cleaning the right pipes. So the first thing was working with the crews to make sure they were cleaning the pipes well, catching what they cleaned, pulling it out of the pipes. That had a big effect. During that same time period, Chris was developing a scope of work, soliciting requests for proposals from consultants to come in and help us develop a really comprehensive program of work to address collection system maintenance management and long-range management of our system, to put in place best-in-class practices so that our collection system performance would be good on all fronts, and that we were really building a strong program from the ground up, not just sort of patching holes. That work, that component culminated in July of 2011, when council approved a contract with Brown and Caldwell for the development of maintenance management practices and all the component parts that go along with that. In May of 2011, we did receive, we did have the Channel Keeper file suit for the collection system spills. And then through the rest of that year, with more or less, we did negotiate with Channel Keeper. We were interested in working some way other than a consent decree, but Channel Keeper was very interested in working on a consent decree. So we did end up with a federal consent decree, which is very much a prescribed agreement of how we will implement these programs, and it is managed by a federal court judge. The consent decree that was negotiated has a primary focus of reducing sanitary sewer overflows. That's very much a primary concern for the city and is a shared concern for Channel Keeper. As such, it includes SSO reduction standards. These are spill limits each year that we are supposed to meet in order to make progress to reduce any opportunity for collection system overflows to cause impacts to waters of the US or cause public health problems. A significant portion of the consent decree is comprised of all that work that we were doing with Brown and Caldwell. So we were able to build that work into the consent decree, and it is the basis for many of the consent decree requirements and much of the work that we have done to develop and implement programs that will ensure good, strong management of our system that is well being managed based on good information and the right information. And then there's an important component of maintenance, repair, replacement, and rehabilitation of our sewer collection system infrastructure. The city of Santa Barbara has had a goal since 1987 of replacing or rehabilitating at least 1% per year of its collection system pipes. We are well set because of that. We were sort of fast to the forefront on that as a city. Many other cities have lagged behind, and it has really put us in good condition with regard to our overall collection system condition. In working on the consent decree with Channel Keeper, we looked at two sets of pipe, the overall pipe and then a subset of the pipes that we, that are located in proximity to storm drains. There's a concern that where pipes are located near to storm drains, there's a potential that water could potentially seep out, filter through the soils, and potentially then find a pipe to seep into and could potentially carry contaminants with it. So in order to address that issue and at the same time get real value for our rate payers in extending the useful life of our collection system, we landed on an approach of, for this subset of pipes, doing an accelerated replacement program where we will add an extra two miles of pipe to the existing two and a half miles that we already produce, replace, and add an extra two miles targeted just at that class of pipes each year. And then, of course, a substantial part of the consent decree is reporting out the work products that we're doing to Channel Keeper, as well as providing annual reports to Channel Keeper and to the public in the form of this public meeting. So today's work really summarized, today's presentation really summarizes the work that was included in the annual collection system report, the annual exfiltration abatement plan, which is the plan that focuses on that extra two miles of pipe, as well as the SSO reduction action plan, which is a plan that we prepared in response to the fact that unfortunately, last year, we were not successful in meeting the 18 SSO limit that is in the consent decree. I do want to speak to that, because the consent decree, it's a complicated document, it's a complex document. Took us a long time to negotiate it. I think it set a good framework for us moving forward, but there are a lot of bits to it. So in the SSO limit, if we don't achieve that limit, it does not mean we're not in compliance with the consent decree. It means that we have to do an additional component of work under the consent decree. We have to, we have to write a consent, a sanitary sewer overflow abatement reduction plan, I think that, overflow reduction plan, and say, "Okay, we didn't meet it. What else do we need to do to meet this?" There's a further provision in the consent decree that says, "If the only reason you didn't meet this was because of reasons beyond your control, well, then that reduction action plan is not required." In 2012, four of our spills were caused by contractor actions. Two of those contractors were actually working for the city, so they were working under our direction and really under our control. So we count those as city spills that we should have been able to control. The other two spills were caused by contractors working on large, private construction projects, not under the control of the city. not under the control of the city. City may have had inspectors there for code compliance types of inspection, but not for the purpose of verifying quality of work. It was private work, it just needed to meet code. One of those spills was the result of a water main being broken, which then flooded the private system and then subsequently flooded our system, causing water to come out of a manhole in the public system. So it was considered a sanitary sewer overflow, but it was beyond the feasible control of the city. There's nothing that we, no program or practice that we could have put in place to prevent that particular instance. Similarly, the other one was related to the construction of a private project where the plumbers left materials in the pipe in that private project that subsequently ended up blocking, moving and blocking our public system. So those two spills technically meant we did not need to develop a reduction action plan. Nonetheless, we've learned a lot in this last year, and we identified some additional management practices that we were planning to implement, and so we have included those and we have submitted the reduction action plan to Channel Keeper for their review and comment. And we believe that those additional, those additional management practices will go even further towards addressing sanitary sewer overflows. I would like to point out that year-to-date, we've had two overflows, both very small, no spills to public waters. So going back to the work plan development, this again is much of the content of the consent decree, and you can see a list of work items here. I want to say that although it looks like a list of plans, it really is much more than that. It represents the development of work practices and the management of information and the practice and approach used by our staff to manage our infrastructure. So the work, as the work is developed, the information that comes from the work that's being done is managed in a very specific way to make sure that future work is appropriately targeted. And to illustrate this, I want to talk about our cleaning and inspection component, because as I've indicated, the main source of our sanitary sewer overflows is maintenance-related. You can see that in 2012, we had about 75% of our system spills caused by maintenance-related problems, predominantly roots, grease and debris being the other. I like the fact that this pie chart looks like a sewer pipe. I thought that was convenient. But the, so this tells us that we can really quickly get after this problem by effectively developing a maintenance management plan. Looking back to see if that was an anomaly, looking at the time period from 2006 to present, you can see that we had a very similar picture with 84% of our spills being caused by maintenance-related problems. There's the slide that was missing. Somehow it got moved. So as we clean our pipes, this is a major component of what we've been implementing in this year, and it's important. As we clean our pipes, we have our staff out there, they stick a basket in the downstream manhole, and they, whatever is caught as they're cleaning the pipe is pulled out, evaluated, and rated for what kind of material it is and how much of it is. Is it, was the pipe clear? Was it light? Did it have medium roots, debris, grease, or was it heavy? When we look at the 156 miles of pipe that we cleaned last year, that you recognize we have 256 miles in our system, so that's well over half our pipe, our system that was cleaned last year. Eighty-six, 98% of the system is either clear or light findings. That tells us a couple of things. One, our system's in pretty good condition, because pipes that have a lot of structural problems don't get clear or light findings. They have debris, they have other things coming back that keep them from being in that clear or light finding condition. The other thing it tells us is that we are very well able to focus on that 2% that needs additional work. Looking at how those findings were distributed, the green on this map is the pipes that were cleaned that had a clear or light finding to them, and the red is the pipes that had a medium or high finding. And you can see that they are not, that they are spatially distributed there. You can find a medium or a high finding anywhere in the city, really, so that in order to manage this infrastructure properly, we really need to be focusing on a pipe-by-pipe condition finding, and that's what we've translated to. So we're really looking now, what is the pipe telling us, how do we manage it? When we find one of those clear, medium or high pipes, what happens is that information is taken back, we have a system that manages the information for every single section of pipe, and it gets a rating that puts it to be cleaned again in six months. Most of our pipe goes back to be cleaned in five years. If at six months, we find that it still has a heavy or medium condition finding, it will get cleaned at an even more frequent frequency. If at six months, it's clear or light, it stays there for a while, just to make sure, and then it will work itself out to its appropriate cleaning frequency. I will say if it's at heavy at six months, then we have to move it on to a more and more frequent cleaning frequency. It also quickly gets itself on to a replacement, repair, or rehabilitation pipeline frequency, because that is where it needs to be. So I just want to show a couple of pictures regarding cleaning. This top picture is inside a sewer line. This is a public main. You can see that the line is actually in pretty good condition, but this is a pipe that we would not be able to give a clear or a light condition to, because we wouldn't be able to clean it. This is a lateral. This lateral is protruding into our sewer main, and it's also got a bunch of roots growing into our sewer main. So this protruding lateral would prevent us from getting our cleaning equipment through, so we would know we needed to go and look at this pipe. We would also tell the people who own the lateral that they need to clean the lateral and fix, and evaluate it for repair, and fix this protruding connection, because that prevents our maintenance. Should we have, there are a couple of things that could happen here. This could cause a blockage of their line, or it could grow out and cause a blockage of our line, and when that happens, that counts as a spill of the city system, even though the roots are coming from a private system. This is what had happened up on the mesa last December, when we had that spill that closed Leadbetter Beach. It was a situation like this, where we had roots from a private lateral growing into a rehabilitated line that caused the blockage. Subsequently, you'll be happy to know, that line, that lateral has been replaced and repaired, so that, that potential problem is gone. The truck down below is our vector. This black hose across the top is a vacuum portion. There's a big water tank at the back. This is the hose that we use for cleaning. It's a high-pressure hose with a specialized nozzle on the end that is very good at cleaning the interior of a pipe, cutting roots, and bringing everything back. And then this other little piece of equipment over here is our easement machine, which we can use for where we have lines in the backyards, where we might not be able to drive a big truck like this. We can take this little machine and extend the capabilities of that vector to be able to clean those more remote locations. Translating to CCTV, closed-circuit television inspection, we use, we're moving now sort of from maintenance to rehabilitation, replacement, and repair. And CCTV is a very effective tool for evaluating and prioritizing which pipes are most in need of rehabilitation and repair. In 2012, we inspected 22 miles of pipe. In 2013, we are expecting to inspect about 50 miles of pipe. You'll see there's kind of a donut hole in this area. That's because our 2000, the current capital program we're working on is intensively focused there. We have gone ahead and rehabilitated pipes there to try and address that two miles a year that we're keeping up with. And that is because that's an area where, that's one of the older part of the city. We get real value for our, for our system by extending the life of that and are also, at the same time, able to preemptively remove any opportunity for those systems to be leaking and potentially causing any kind of problems. So in five years, we will have inspected over half of the system, and then we will continue at 10% per year, and in 10 years, the entire system will be inspected. It's good to do it on a distributed way like this, because we, there's only so much information we can manage, quite honestly, and also it lets us match the amount of work that we're getting in, the amount of information we're getting into the capital programs we're designing, and to keep that information fresh, so that we know that we still have, you know, good information to work from. With regard to pipe rehabilitation, replacement, and repair, in 2012, the consent decree requirement was for two miles of that pipe in proximity to storm drains and 2.5 miles of what we'll call regular pipe, what we've been doing historically for the last 25-plus years, 30 years. We did not meet the goal for the accelerated pipe. There is a provision in the consent decree that says, if you hit an overall spending cap, you are not required to spend additional money in order to achieve, in order to be in compliance, effectively. And because the consent decree didn't start until March last year, we already had a lot of work going on, and we hit that spending cap much earlier than we expected, and so we had to postpone the accelerated pipe replacement, because we really needed to be able to manage it financially. The extra work that was done in the regular pipe does get credited to the new year, so we've already got one and a half miles of regular pipe done. We have about a mile left to complete, and we are well under construction with the accelerated pipe project, and we expect that to be completely done and wrapped up by July at the very latest. But it's actually mostly done right now, as we, as we speak. So just to summarize and wrap up, the 2012 consent decree requirement, we did not meet all of the requirements of the consent decree, but we are in compliance with the consent decree. The SSO reduction performance standards, we exceeded by two. The CIP projects, we've just reported on that, and, but we did meet all of the reporting requirements, including submission of a great number of reports to Channel Keeper that formed the basis of the work that is the management practices, the Brown and Caldwell reports, and then responding to comments on those as well. 2013, we do expect continued compliance with the consent decree. The CIP projects, as I said, are well underway, and we have no question that we're going to have, we will meet both of those requirements, and we are on schedule to meet the reporting requirements. With two spills so far this year, we are very hopeful that we'll meet the SSO limits. We really believe that we're starting to see some of the work we're doing pay off, but it is a long-time implementation. There is, there are sometimes unintended consequences, things you think that you're doing well may actually trigger another problem. So we're crossing our fingers that we're seeing a trend that will stay flat, but we, if it's not, we'll look at the reasons why it's not and adjust. And with that, I'd like to turn it back over to Ms. Anderson.
Thank you. So I think the, this provides a good opportunity to be able to understand what's been going on over the last, not quite full 12 months, but we've been actively engaged, as you know, for, for the last couple of years and before, in focusing on this SSO issue. And so I think we're feeling, we're feeling a strong sense of progress, we're feeling a strong sense of moving in the right direction, clearly where we all want to be headed, but doing so in a way that is really knowledge-based. So our decisions are based on a good understanding of what is affecting an outcome that we're striving to achieve. And I think the, the recognition of the quality of the wastewater collection system being really in, in a very positive place. We don't have what I would consider to be a backlog of maintenance, as we have in some of our other infrastructure areas. I think we have been steadfast in this 1% approach for a number of years, and that's paying off. But we're also recognizing how the relationship of our maintenance program has got to be tied in and is really an integral part of the success of the performance of that system. So with that, I'll turn it back to you.
Well, and I believe under the consent decree, Channel Keeper, you have up to 20 minutes if you wanted to speak on this topic, so now's the time to do that, and then I know we have a public comment speaker. Ms. Redmond.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council members. Kira Redmond, Executive Director of Santa Barbara Channel Keeper. I'd like to start by acknowledging and thanking you and your staff for all the hard work and additional effort that's been made over the past year to accelerate improvements to the city's sewer system and to reduce sewage spills. Channel Keeper recognizes that this has been and will continue to be a lot of hard work, and that the city has invested substantial time and resources toward complying with our settlement agreement, and I want you to know that we appreciate that very much. I think it's safe to say that Channel Keeper and the city share the same goal, to protect the environment and public health by ensuring that sewage does not contaminate our creeks and beaches, either through sewage spills or exfiltration out of cracked pipes and into storm drains. While in the past, we may not have seen eye to eye on the best ways or pace at which to achieve that goal, we did agree on and now have a clear path to get there, which is laid out in the settlement agreement that we all signed a year ago. The city has invested substantial effort into meeting the year-one obligations of our consent decree, including several important plans and programs which lay the foundation for future improvements. Channel Keeper and our expert, Dr. Bruce Bell, have reviewed these documents in detail and provided your staff with comments on them, which we hope that you've found to be useful. Despite this substantial effort and progress in the past year, however, the city did not, did miss the mark on what Channel Keeper considers the two most important elements of our agreement, the Sewage Spill Reduction Performance Standard of 18 for 2012, and the requirement to repair, rehabilitate, or replace two miles of high-risk pipe, or spend up to $900,000 to reach that goal. We know the city shares our disappointment with the high number of sewage spills we had last year, 20, up by 67% from 12 in 2011, and we believe you are striving to do better. Channel Keeper finds it unfortunate, however, that the city has opted to blame others for two of the spills that put you over the consent decree limit of 18 last year. After reviewing the circumstances, we disagree that both of these were caused by contractor error that the city could not have feasibly controlled. But be that as it may, what is important is that the city is firmly committed to bringing that number down, and that it lays out a clear path for doing so in the SSO Reduction Action Plan for 2013. Channel Keeper provided some specific comments on that plan yesterday in writing, namely that it needs to include more specific information about how the spill reduction efforts are designed to achieve compliance with the spill reduction standard, additional information related to changes in cleaning frequencies for different categories of pipes, and changes to spill response and reporting protocols to ensure accurate reporting of spills and their causes. We hope the city will amend the SSO Reduction Action Plan along these lines, so that it clearly articulates how the city will meet the 2012 SSO Performance Standard of 15, or ideally, less than that number. Beyond reducing spills, the other core element of our settlement is the requirement to repair, rehabilitate, or replace two miles of pipe with a high risk of exfiltrating to storm drains, or expend $900,000 to reach that goal each year. As has already been stated, Channel Keeper is disappointed that the city failed to meet this obligation in 2012, instead only replacing 1.02 miles of higher-risk pipe at a reported cost of $643,000. In a recent letter, the city explained that only 324 of this amount was spent on actual repair and rehabilitation, the rest on surveying and other tasks to identify high-risk pipes. Channel Keeper believes that surveying and other tasks are distinct from the actual pipe repair and rehabilitation that the city promised to do, and should not be included in calculating expenditures toward the $900,000 cap. Thus, the city has $575,000 in rollover money to repair a high-risk pipe in 2012. Channel Keeper greatly appreciates the city's expression of its intent to make up the 0.98 miles of high-risk pipe it fell short of replacing in 2012, over the remaining four years of our agreement. We did note in our written comments on the exfiltration abatement program that it needs to explicitly identify the mileage the city intends to repair or replace in the coming year, as well as the projected budget for completing this work. We also noted that the need for more complete information used in determining which pipes are high-risk. But from what we were able to glean, we believe the city is proposing to repair or replace 2.19 miles of high-risk pipe in 2013. So we look forward to seeing the other 0.79-mile shortfall from 2012 made up in the remaining three years, and again, we appreciate the city's intent to do so. We continue to disagree with the city's argument that because it exceeded the CD expenditures cap of $5.1 million last year, it is excused for meeting the annual two-mile high-risk pipe repair obligation. We, in light of that, we still view that as a violation of our consent decree, and we could take this back to court and ask the judge to force the city to come into compliance, but we're not going to do that. Channel Keeper truly wants to have a more positive and productive working relationship with the city moving forward. We believe that all parties' interests are best served at this time by committing resources to bringing the city's spill rate down into compliance with the required standards and increasing the level of effort to address high-risk pipes. We sincerely hope the city will join us in working with a better spirit of cooperation moving forward to achieve the goal that we all share, clean water in Santa Barbara. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Smith, our Water Commission, you wanted to speak? And I don't know if we have any other speaker slips? Okay.
Madam Mayor and council members, I'm Jim Smith. I'm on the Water Commission, and I want to assure you that the commission has carefully reviewed the programs and the activities that they have described to you. I want to tell you that my own experience in this is that I worked for 37 years in the electric power business, and the water, city water department is really two separate water processing plants, incoming, outgoing, and the distribution system for the incoming water and the collection system for the clear water are also the two plants and the water and the collection system for the clear water are also the two plants, and the water pipes are more than an average of 30 years old. So it's a continual challenge to keep those in working and meeting the requirements, the federal and state requirements, that each year tend to be increasingly stringent. So I want to assure you that the Water Commission and the Water Department is working carefully to balance the facilities and the operation. Thank you.
Thank you. So this item does not require a motion, but are there any comments or questions from the council? Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I want to highlight our good fortune to have secured the employ of Mr. Toth these few years ago. That is a huge game changer for this city on this issue, and we just were able to bring in a heavy hitter when we desperately needed one in this area, someone who's been through some really tough times in San Diego, obviously a huge system bigger than this. And we are very fortunate to have you here, Mr. Toth. And we're seeing, I know that in our neighborhood, I was kind of taking a peek at that little map there, and we have one little strip there that is right in our neighborhood, and that truck has been there several times. And it's just heartening to see that element, that maintenance piece, really taking a quantum leap over the last few years, and it's making a very positive difference. So thank you for that work, and thank you, staff. I mean, obviously, this has been a tough few years to work this out. I appreciate that we're not headed back to court now as well, and I know that we're on a positive path. This is one of the more heartening systems in the city, where there's been a long commitment to maintenance and to investments in it. More are coming, and I've tried to bring that message back to council as often as they could because it's a continual investment. But this is one of our better systems in the city, and I really appreciate the work that staff has done, is doing.
Mr. Hotchkiss.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Bjork, on the laterals that we, or the sort of root clog lateral we saw there, how do we handle enforcement?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hotchkiss, we have a sewer lateral inspection requirement in our city municipal code. So in an instance where we saw the kind of thing we saw in that slide, where there's obvious roots growing into the main, we send a letter to the property owner saying, "You've got a problem. You need to go and have your plumber look at it and video the pipe. Submit the video to us. We'll evaluate that video and determine what amount of work, if any, needs to happen on that pipe." And then they are required to make any required changes. So my guess is a pipe like the one I showed you in that picture, we would require replacement of that lateral. There are other elements of that lateral inspection program. There are certain circumstances where it has to happen once every 10-year for condominium associations and for commercial facilities. If you're doing a major expansion at your home, so a major remodel, or a remodel that adds two or more new fixtures, not appliances, but fixtures, trying to tie it to substantial expense, so it's not like you come in for a new driveway and all of a sudden you've got to do a lateral replacement, but to have some kind of nexus there. Those are sort of the catches for having it happen. If the property has an overflow from their lateral, then they're required to come into the sewer lateral inspection program. So a lot of ways to try and catch and correct those laterals.
Doesn't sale of a house trigger inspection?
No, it doesn't. We had proposed that. It was not one of the ways that we ended up going. We have required that on the city's inspection report, I can't remember what the zoning information report, thank you, that the zoning information report indicate whether or not a lateral inspection is available. So it's really just trying to give notice to the prospective purchaser that they might want to check it out, but it's not a requirement at this time.
I understand. Finally, you mentioned 156 miles of our 227 total pipe miles?
256.
256. Though that, 156, that's inspected?
That was 156 miles of pipe cleaned this year. Our plan, our maintenance plan, is to clean every stick of pipe at least once every five years. A substantial amount of it does get cleaned more than once every five years, and quite as you saw, some of it, much more than once every five years. So I would ask Chris Toth, I think that's probably fairly typical of what we'd be expecting on an annual basis in terms of maintenance.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hotchkiss, that's correct. You know, this last year, in terms of cleaning miles, we cleaned approximately 185 miles of our 256-mile system, and geographically, it's something less than that, as Ms. Bjork said, because we're cleaning pipes, some pipes frequently, three times a year, four times a year, some even at a one-month frequency. So the goal is to continue that and to, in addition to that, clean pipe that we have not touched, you know, in a period of time, so that within this five-year window, we'll have touched every pipe at least once, and then those that require more subsequent cleaning, clean them more frequently.
Is this a robotic system, or is it actually manual labor?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hotchkiss, this is the big trucks that you see the pictures on. It's not robotic cleaning from the sense that there's nobody there, it's just a tool inside the pipe. This is actually staff setting up at the downstream manhole, cleaning one section of pipe at a time to the upstream manhole, as Ms. Bjork said, putting a basket in the downstream part of the pipe, collecting the material from that pipe cleaning event, and then estimating the quantity of that, so that based on that quantity we capture, we can determine when next to clean that pipe.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Bjork, when you mention the SSOs, we talk about in terms of numbers of incidences. Do each one of those also have the tracking of the amount of gallons spilled?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Rouse, yes, they do. And so the two incidents we've had so far this year have had a combined spill of 30 gallons, none of which made it off-site.
Okay, very good. And then kind of going back on a comment that Ms. Redmond made about whose fault something is and whose fault something isn't. And I don't know, are we in disagreement on how we determine that? It seems that there may be certain things out of our control, but I don't know. I know as much as I've heard here today, so.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Rouse, I think the intent behind that, and we talked about this during negotiation of the consent decree, the exact example of when something was out of our control was the kind of situation where the contractor doing something we couldn't control. We can implement maintenance practices and system management practices to control things that we influence, that we have control over. There is a limit to that. If someone was to go out and decide to sabotage the system, that would be very hard for us to prevent. So things that, we know that unfortunately, what happens on construction sites can result in problems in the collection system, but particularly when they're not city construction sites, it's hard for us to make any changes to what we're doing to influence that. And so the intent of the Santerio Sewer Reduction Action Plan is to make changes to what we're doing to influence the number of spills in a downward manner. And so when those spills are caused by something that we really can't influence, it doesn't matter what changes we make, we're probably still not going to be able to influence those.
And the situation like the one you have up on the screen now, where you have a lateral that's infiltrated into the main, and that causes an SSO, is it because the main is now blocked, so it's now the city's responsibility?
That's correct. And that's because, you know, we can influence that. We can be cleaning and inspecting our mains, finding situations where this kind of thing is happening, and directing the property owner to take corrective action. So we do have an ability to influence that. It's still one of those places where there's the public-private interface, so it may be that they'll have an overflow on their line. Unfortunately, we have a tool to address that as well, but at least that's something that we can touch or start to get a handle on. And that's what our Reduction Action Plan is really focused on, is how can we operate our system and the things that we have control on within our system to prevent spills.
And the interface is right at the hub of where the main and the lateral connect, is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
That's correct. And I'd like to actually call that out because it's important. A lot of people don't realize that there are lateral runs, if they're connected to a sewer main in the street, the lateral runs all the way through, under the street, to the point where it's connected.
And I might also point out that there's actually a provision that's called out in the consent decree that recognizes the potential for incident beyond the control of the city, and that's the reason that there's language in there to that effect. So it's not, I don't think it's a disagreement in the sense of recognizing that this can occur. It was part of the negotiation, and it is language that's also included in the consent decree.
Thank you.
The House?
I just want to chime in a little bit here. First of all, thank you, Mr. White, for keeping us up to date as we've gone along through this whole process, and it's really great to have you there as liaison, and especially understanding, I mean, these have been, it seems like warring parties during the heat of the battle, so to speak, but listening to Ms. Redmond today and really hearing the understanding and the recognition, and I really, really want to thank you for that, by the way, the recognition that we really are all in this together, and we share a common goal. And there is a really earnest effort here to really improve our system. And you can see, thank you for the chart that shows where the recognition and the actions we began to take, and you can see the improvement immediately that kind of overlapped with Channel Keeper's active participation in the project. So just a couple of things here. One, the consent decree requires these two miles per year additional work where to resolve or address the exfiltration potential or problem, if I understand what I was just told here a minute ago. How does that dovetail or match where we know the actual priority, need for maintenance or improvement or replacement? I mean, is that the same thing? Are two miles of replacing pipe because of the possibility of exfiltration as an issue, does that overlap or coincide with where our inspections have shown that we actually have the greatest need?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember House, I think that's one of the really nice things about the way this extra two miles is designed, is it really allows us to accelerate the rate at which we are rehabilitating our system. So the only difference between that two miles and the rest of our pipe is whether or not it's located in proximity to a storm drain. All the rest of the criteria for prioritization are the same, with one caveat. If there's some underlying water quality problem in the area, in creeks, that has been identified and can't be resolved, we might look more closely at sewer systems in that general range or vicinity to see which of those are highest priority. So we've got those two components added to our typical component of pipe condition, age, what's the consequence of failure. Certainly, if we have a pipe that, you know, is right along the beach, and it's equal condition to one that's not right along the beach, it has a higher consequence of failure. So those things all come into the matrix of how we prioritize pipe. But within that special two-mile, we still are looking at age, condition, consequence of failure. And so it really allows us to accelerate and expedite and get ahead of where we would be otherwise with regard to overall system renewal, while also preemptively taking away any potential chance, be it there or not, for leakage to occur between one system and another. So it's got real value to our system. Even if there's no leakage occurring, there is the value to the system of system renewal.
Is it so that Santa Barbara is one of the leaders in recognizing the potential for exfiltration as a real issue, that it could possibly be a serious problem?
It was identified as a potentially, as something that could be happened. I don't think it's been quantified in terms of what kind of risk it occurs yet, and so getting ahead of that and just really proactively addressing it through system renewal is a really good way to go about it, instead of spending a lot of money trying to decide whether or not it happens, just really focusing on, let's renew this part of the system.
Okay, thank you. And just addressing this issue that Mr. White brought up a few minutes ago, and that has to do with what happens on private property by a contractor working on a development project of some sort. And as one who's been on the Planning Commission and is on the Ordinance Committee, I'm really interested to know if there's some point of contact here, some nexus. Our conditions of approval require lots of things. They require that, you know, like the dust doesn't blow all over the place, and that the streets are kept clean when they leave the site. And there's a whole lot of things we do to maintain the neighborhood around a construction site. And I'm just curious about our conditions of approval for development projects, or the requirements that we have if they're just over-the-counter projects where they could meet this. Is there anything that we might want to do to strengthen what we require of contractors or projects where there's development, or perhaps even, I don't know if it'd be building code, but I don't know where it exactly would live in ordinance land, but it would be good to be able to address this if there's any way, and actually put up a signal for anybody doing this kind of development where this is a potential, and maybe get ahead of it where we don't normally have control.
Madam Mayor and Councilmember House, you know, I think the other thing to recognize, and just looking at the last year as an example, where we had those two incidents, one was breaking into a water main. We don't let people do that. So it's not a basis of if we had a rule that said you couldn't, it wouldn't have happened. So there were a lot of problems that were generated by that, and one of them was the SSO. And the other situation where the plug traveled down and entered the main, that also is not intended to be good practice on the part of private plumbing and contractor operations. So I don't think it's a lack of expectation of what is good construction practices. I do think, as Ms. Bjork pointed out, the ability to have an onsite inspector there watching the work that's going on is not possible. It's a not financially feasible kind of effort. But I do think we want to continue to encourage our private development and our private contracting community to be cautious and looking for best practices. But I don't think we have identified ourselves in the experience that we've had that it's some kind of a regulatory issue that would be.
Maybe there's something more on a practical, almost an administrative kind of thing, where what happens is the flag is raised around this kind of an issue, and really reminds contractors how seriously we take this kind of thing, and recognizing that accidents will happen, but that alertness, that's the attention to safety, would really benefit all of us. But this is why I say that, because there's an interface with the public system. Otherwise, you know, they're going to have their own safety program that keeps people having goggles on and wearing the right equipment and hard hats and stuff. But in this case, it does interface with the public system. Perhaps there's something we can give them as a notice, sit them down while we're doing the pre-construction conference or something, and just really, you know, amplify our interest. Okay, that's it, except say thanks to the ratepayers. They're the ones that are bearing the cost of the additional effort, and maybe our reports back to them will be able to really celebrate our success.
Thank you for the report, and I appreciate Channel Keeper's comments and that we are moving forward and beyond a litigation-type of mode and into a solutions mode. So that's, I think, good for everyone, and it seems like things are headed in the right direction, so I appreciate the report. Okay. Any council member committee assignment reports? Ms. Maria?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I attended the Metropolitan Transit District MTD Board Meeting this morning, and the discussion was on service changes, and the Line 22 has been saved for another six months. The staff is considering tweaking the route, also waiting for the Ellen Canto to be fully operational. And the issue there is not just their employees, but their guests using the public transit to get down to the mission, or the employees getting up to the hotel. There was also some discussion about raising rates for the bus passes for City College, which is not an easy thing. So I had to leave in the middle of that discussion, and if there's something more, I'll come back. Last week, I was at the Joint Cities-County Affordable Housing Task Course, and despite the loss of RDA, there are some new projects all over the county. Carpinteria and Carp Valley actually have quite a few new housing projects affordable. Councilmember Hotchkiss? Councilmember Hotchkiss and I were at the West Side Neighborhood Watch, and it was inspired by Dario Peany buying some property there. And so it's a small neighborhood watch area, kind of centered around Chino and Islay, which is that Peany Central. And I'd like to thank the police chief for showing up, and also the beat coordinator there, Jonathan Reyes. And I had to leave early, maybe you have more to add, Councilmember Hotchkiss, when it's your turn. I also attended the State of the Library presentation, that was last week sometime, and there's high hopes for the children's library project, and there was some good discussion about restoring the book budget. Thank you.
Mr. Hotchkiss?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I did stay a little bit longer, and the chief's presentation was particularly interesting. One person said there had been some gang activity, and they had called 911, and nobody ever came to their door. And he said, "Well, we do that on purpose because we don't think when there are reports, we should drive up with a police car to your front door because the gang people are watching. So for your own protection, we take care of it with unmarked cars, et cetera." And they were very much reassured by that. And he stayed for, oh, I don't know, talked for 20 minutes, maybe even a half hour. They were much gratified. It was good. A couple of other things, last Saturday morning, Mormons cleaned up a number of locations here in Santa Barbara, and I was with them at Alice Keck Park, during which one of the Parks and Rec folks said they were anxious to have people adopt turtles. You know, there's so many at Alice Keck Park, so I immediately volunteered. I haven't heard yet, I don't know if I'm going to be a fit parent or not. You'd have to go through a rigorous, I think, question and answer period of, whatever. We shall see. But I bring that up because there may be folks out there that would like a turtle, and that would be great. These things are, you know, healthy-sized. Now that I've got everybody's laughing. The mayor and I were at the Jewish festival in Oak Park, it was great, a lot of elected officials, and good food, and just fun. People were having a great time. And that's it. Thank you.
Well, I wasn't going to bring this one up, since you brought up adopting turtles. I led the Chihuahua de Mayo Parade on State Street on Saturday, and the month of May, the animal shelters, you get half off the whole in Chihuahua where you can adopt a chihuahua, and Spain neutering are free up to the first 300 that they get. And so there were over 30 chihuahuas at this, I mean, and they were all dressed up, and one of the joys of the job, let me tell you, it was pretty funny.
Maybe we could do a double, a turtle-chihuahua special.
Oh, dear. Yeah, buy one, get one, I don't know, whatever. Friday evening, in Morpark, the League of California Cities, Channel Counties Division Dinner occurred, there were about 80 or so people there, and the guest speaker was Assembly Member Jeff Gurrell, so it was good to hear from him and his perspective, obviously looking at a lot of cost savings and ways to, you know, we hear good news, better news now from state government, we had them before in terms of their finances, but it's not like everything's perfect yet by any stretch of the imagination. So interesting to hear his perspective. And then I want to commend the Park Foundation. On Sunday, they had a sold-out event at the Cabrillo Arts Pavilion, and it looks like they raised quite a bit of funds to help the Parks Department in their maintenance and programming for summer programs. The students who run the culinary school at, I think either at Franklin or the West Side Community Center, or maybe both, they were there giving out a lot of hors d'oeuvres, and it was quite delicious. So great event. Mr. House?
Some real quick reports here. Number one, the most important, of course, is that, remember, we had the high school students here last time singing to us. I did go to see Spam Lot, I highly recommend it, it's the most fun I've had in a long time, and certainly took me back to earlier times. But they're phenomenal. Anyway, I mentioned before Conference and Visitors Bureau and Film Commission, they're working very hard on their strategic plan. I went to their unveiling of the new marketing plan this morning at the Picara. Really, really remarkable, they're looking at whole new ways of measuring or new sets of metrics to really see how we're doing in terms of our success in our marketing of the region. And there's a new name coming soon, I think, for the organization, and we'll wait till they unveil it. And the emphasis is on the electronic media. I mean, it's all, it's not, you know, it's not just our phones, it's the tablets, it's the everything besides magazines. I mean, it just seems like this is just taking over. Real emphasis on the international piece of the equation. The Arts Symposium the other day was phenomenal at the Canary. You'll hear, I think, growing interest in arts and culture, culture and arts master plan, something that they feel is, was called for, called out in our general plan discussions, and exists somewhere in the historic element or something, it's in there. And so I've pledged to go back and hunt it back down again, because we all did discuss it, and see where it might be brought to life, because there's a lot of interest there. And I think one of the comments that somebody said there, she says, "If funding, if raising money and funding is your, you think that's your main issue, you're mistaken." And she was talking specifically about how valuable the arts are and culture is to our community, and we need to really make that noise, and to free up some of the money and some of the wallets that are out there, because it really deserves to come to that, and it does benefit our economy directly.
Okay, thank you. We have some closed sessions to read out.
Conference with real property negotiators, State Route 225. Item number 14, conference with labor negotiator. And item number 15, conference with legal counsel pending litigation.
Thank you, and then we'll adjourn from closed session. Thank you.